Sure, it's, it's fine, whatever works best.
What did I do with my sheet? I'm gonna have you ask question number three for the general interview questions for new applicants.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
It says, please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group. Okay, so that'll be your consistent question you ask of everyone. Sound good?
Okay, yeah.
I can't really hear Marian, Councilor Valenzuela, that well. We're gonna fix that, cuz it could, I mean, I did, cuz I can't see well anymore. I'm trying to do all the things.
Okay.
Oh, that's much better. Okay. Councilor Guffterson, you good?
Yep.
So. I'm gonna call this work session of the Forest Grove City Council to order. The topic at 5:30 is Board and Commission Interviews. And I'm gonna turn it over in attendance, we have online via Zoom, we have Councilor Valenzuela, Councilor Guffterson, Councilor Martinez, Councilor Marshall, and Mayor Wenzel. Absent and excused is Councilor Ewing and Councilor Rippey. I'm gonna turn it over to Jessie quickly.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Councilor Valenzuela, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, great.
So just a brief staff report, in November and December of 2023, council interviewed fifteen members for various boards and commissions, and after that was all complete, there were still some vacancies that were left, and so the council asked us to do another recruitment. We did the recruitment from March fifteenth to April thirtieth, it was open for six weeks. We advertised it heavily on social media, on the website. We received ten confirmed applicants, however, we did have one applicant that requested to withdraw today. So we're down to nine applicants. The council has the applicant list, the applications themselves, and then the board and commission roster. I think there is six minutes for each interview, and council also has the questions, and then there's plenty of time for deliberation afterwards. And if you have any questions of me, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright.
Any questions of council? Okay, so we're gonna get started now, and I believe our first, and I really do apologize if I mispronounce people's names, I'll try to ask before. But our first applicant, if we, is on Zoom. And it's Sachi Akawa? Is that correct?
Close, Sachi Arakawa.
Arakata, okay, thank you, Ms. Arakata. Um, we're gonna get started, so I'm gonna read the script really quick. Thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each Board or Commission is advisory to the city council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in the public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions. Okay, and then at the end, if you have any questions, you can ask them. Okay, so we're gonna get started, Councilor Guffterson.
Hi, Sachi. Um, why do you want to serve on a Board or Commission?
Yeah, great question. Um, well, I work a lot with trees, and trees are a big part of my life, both in my work and also kind of my civic engagement. Um, I do a lot of volunteer work with trees and, and used to when I lived in Portland, be like a neighborhood tree stewardess. I really liked to get involved in that way. Um, and I moved to the Forest Grove area four years ago. Um, and we love Forest Grove, we spend a lot of time there, I live just a little outside of city limits, but within the zip code. Um, and, you know, I think the Forest Grove's trees are very unique, and I was really excited to hear that you have a community forestry commission. All smaller cities have that in Oregon, so that was really exciting. Um, as like a long-term tree lover in my personal life and also my professional life, working with tree code and tree regulation, um, it, it kind of made sense, um, and I really like giving back and being able to make an impact in a place that I actually live and spend a lot of time with my family in.
Great, thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Karen Martinez. And Sachi, number two, how are you vested in Forest Grove? Which you already mentioned that you've lived here for four years. If any other information you can give us about your life here?
Earth, yeah, and my dog is whining, so if she gets too loud, let me know. Um, yeah, so my husband grew up here, um, he went to school here, and, and both his parents were, uh, schoolteachers, um, in the area. And so he has a, a long history here, and we've spent together a lot of time here even before we moved to the area because his, his parents still, um, live here. Um, and so I, I've loved Forest Grove for a long time, I love the college, I love downtown, again, love the big trees. We love Rogers Park. Um, so I, I feel, I, again, I think it's really unique how, um, many, especially like large mature trees, Forest Grove has been able to preserve, and I know as a tree, as, as an environmental planner, how challenging that can be. Um, so I think it's very cool that, um, the city has, you know, put some effort into, um, stewardship and preservation of trees. I also know how challenging that can be again, um, so, uh, you know, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, but I, I definitely really, um, enjoy and appreciate, uh, the way that Forest Grove has been able to keep a lot of their trees and keep that character, um, of the city. Um, so that's, yeah, and we, we spend most of our time in Forest Grove. It's the smallest, or it's the closest town to us, um, that, that we can spend time in and recreate and all that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sachi, and this is Councilor Valenzuela. And, uh, first of all, I want to congratulate you on your outstanding history of volunteering. Uh, you're obviously very passionate, uh, for the work that you do, uh, with the trees and, and forest. And I think you would, um, your background would bring a lot of, uh, positive contribution to the commission. Uh, but my question for you is, please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group.
Hmm, yeah, I mean, that's, consensus is always a challenge, and I don't know how polarizing tree topics are in Forest Grove, but I work kind of around the region on a lot of polarizing topics related to trees. Um, I work in Portland, um, Beaverton, Lake Oswego, and while people love trees, we also know there's a lot of things that, um, conflict with trees, you know, infrastructure, utilities, sidewalks, um, making room for new development that we need, housing, jobs. Um, so, yeah, trees can, well, we all, you know, or many of us are tree lovers, there's also a lot of things that conflict, and, and it can be hard to, um, make those tough choices and, and come to consensus. I think consensus is about coming to decisions we can live with. Um, and so part of that is understanding everyone's perspective and where we're coming from, um, and where there's common ground. And, you know, it may not be, the common ground may not be the thing we all want, you know, the ideal outcome for each one of us, but it's an outcome we can agree, we can live with together and, and that we can agree on. So I think understanding people's positions, being able to maybe kind of step back from our own positions and, or get whoever we're working with to step back and kind of think about the issue and, and our root goals and values, and maybe not talk so much, try not to use like buzzwords or really loaded words, but think more about like the root values that we all have and maybe share. Um, and then trying to, um, work from there to find common ground. Um, and also like communicating in ways that are respectful, um, are, um, accessible, I think, too. Being able to communicate to people accessibly about what we're talking about in plain language. Um, you know, and working in Portland, a lot of times people use a lot of buzzwords, and there's, you know, a lot of, um, language that can be, um, either alienating or, or confusing to people. So I think also like part of consensus is like making sure we're all speaking the same language and plainly and, and doing, communicating the issues in an accessible way so we can actually like understand each other. Because I think there's usually a lot more common ground than we think there is.
Thank you, Sachi.
Hi, Sachi, this is Councilor Marshall. I have more of a specific question for the, um, for the Forestry Board. Um, what are some ideas that the city could do for tree planting outreach in underserved areas of the community?
Hmm, great question, yeah. I mean, I think first off, just kind of, um, identifying, and, and you may, you all may have already done this work, but identifying what we mean by underserved or vulnerable. Um, you know, is that where areas that have low tree canopy only, is it just about where we have less trees? Um, and when we say less trees, do we mean canopy as a whole? Um, like as in if we're looking from above, just where there's trees, period? Are we talking about street trees, you know, trees in the public right of way? Are we talking about park trees? So I guess first question, or first thing would just be defining what we mean by vulnerable, and is that just about where people have access to trees? Or is it also about like socioeconomic characteristics? Um, you know, uh, historically marginalized populations? So, um, coming to a common understanding about how we define those things, I think is, is a really important first step. Um, and then reaching out to groups that are already working in the community. I, I know there's community-based organizations, service providers, um, that, that work in communities that don't have as many trees, um, and also maybe have other like socio-economic vulnerabilities that we wanna look at. Um, of course, things like shade, um, and urban heat island are always an issue when you think about equity and, and vulnerability. Um, and so thinking about what populations are, are most vulnerable to those types of things and where they live, and who, who works out there in terms of community-based organizations or community leaders that the city might already have partnerships with. Um, and, you know, I, I don't know a lot about Forest, the city of Forest Grove's relationship with community groups, but I know both Forest Grove, I think, and Cornelius have pretty active, um, community groups that I think we, you could really leverage relationships with, um, to, to get people more involved in stewardship, planting. Um, I think also offering things like three-yard trees, pre-street trees, or helping people out with the cost of planting and maintenance um, is really helpful, giving them information about how to care for a tree. A lot of people I talk to, um, in relation to tree planting or having trees are really concerned about, um, hazard trees, too. Um, they can't afford to deal with, you know, a tree that's uprooting their sidewalk that might fall in their house during an ice storm, like this last winter was really problematic for a lot of people that had big trees, um, because they were afraid of trees falling in their house, understandably. And we have a lot of big trees in Forest Grove, too, right? That if they came down would, would be quite dangerous. So I think just get, making sure people have resources and information. Um, and then, so identifying the place and, and like what we mean by vulnerable. Um, you know, targeting those areas for planting and for, um, like financial assistance. Um, and then working with those communities to make sure they actually want trees, they understand, you know, how to take care of the trees and that those aren't gonna be a burden for them.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions for the council?
I went a little long, so I'll try. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess what, like, how, what is you all's vision for what you would like to see the, the Forestry Commission, um, achieve, like in partnership with you all? Like, do you, do you have kind of a vision for that? And I know, we don't have much time, that's a pretty big question.
Quick, cuz of the time, but we do, the Forestry, um, Commission does have a master plan, that's part of our Parks and Rec master plan. So they use that to work off and have a yearly, um, you know, objective and work plan. And then right now, one of the main focuses that the council has for the forestry for this upcoming year is the downtown street inventory and street trees, and really looking at what's going on with that. Accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. Um, so what's?
Thank you, very concise.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so what's gonna happen now is after we finish all of our interviews, the council will deliberate and talk, and then one of our staff members, Ms. Joyce Phillips, will be contacting you, um, letting you know what the decision was. Um, and then she'll tell you the next steps. So you can expect that phone call in the next couple of weeks, I would assume?
Okay, that sounds great. Yeah, she kind of outlined the details of the position for me when I spoke with her. So I, I think I've got a basic understanding of what's required, and yeah, I look forward to hearing you all, and thank you so much for, for having me here today.
Great, thanks, it was a pleasure being here. Have a nice night.
You as well, okay, bye.
Bye. So for applicants who are in person in the audience, when I call your name, you'll come up to the chair that's pulled out a little bit, it's not all the way pushed in, and then speak into the microphone. So our next applicant is Mr. Michael Howell. Um, if you wanna come up, we're just gonna go over the same process. Thank you. And I believe that microphone, there's a red light on that microphone, sir. Okay, perfect, that's the one to use there. Okay, so thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each Board or Commission is advisory to the city council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in the public process, the public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions. Okay, so we're gonna start with Councilor Guffterson.
Alright. Hello, Mr. Howell, um, why do you want to serve on a Board or Commission?
So I've been on the Community Forestry Commission now for several years, uh, I think this is my third time reapplying. Um, I like that board, it fits with my past history of, uh, education and work. Um, and I feel like, um, I've worked really well on that board, and, and I enjoy it. And so when I started, it was kind of, I wanted to get into the community and do something, you know, at, at City Hall, and this seemed like an easy fit, and since then, I've just enjoyed that. And I have young kids now and no aspirations to do anything more at the moment, but I wanted to stay in touch. And, uh, I own a small timber company, and I started my college education in forestry at OSU, and, uh, currently manage land, and it's been a really nice fit, and I've worked, I think, really well with the people currently on the board.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Howell, since you're a re-applicant, we're gonna skip Ms. Martinez's question about being vested in the community.
Sure.
And we're gonna move on to the consensus question from Councilor Valenzuela. Okay, great, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Howell, uh, my question for you is, please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group.
Okay. Um, so my approach to that here has been more of, I like to state the case that I believe is the correct one, and then I like to be more of a wallflower. So, um, it's, it's really simple. Uh, there's some bigger personalities on the board, and I let those guys, you know, push their agenda for the most part, but I, I'll state what I feel is necessary, but I have no real interest in swaying anything left or right, or, you know, to my opinion, because if I'm the minority decision, then that's what it's gonna be. Um, and again, there's other bigger voices than mine at the, at the table. But that would be my, my way of handling that. Alright. And, um, what are some ideas that the city could do for tree planting outreach in underserved areas of the community? It's interesting because it, it feels like we really focus on three different things. Uh, it's either, uh, damaged trees, or the downtown corridor, or, uh, Street Tree USA, which is always very big. And those seem to monopolize most of our time. And so we haven't really pushed any outreach, and it feels like the funding hasn't really been, uh, available to do more than what we've already set out to do. And, um, so that hasn't been a priority or something we've really looked at, you know, trying to get the downtown street trees up and going and figuring out with, um, the owners of the property and working with the city, how that will play out, and just taking care of city grates that are getting pushed up by our street trees and things of that nature has really monopolized the time. So going out beyond that hasn't been much of an issue. Um, if that's a way that the council would like us to go, I, I don't have any problem with that. But it feels like, uh, what we've been asked to do already is the majority of our time. So I, I'm not sure how we'd handle doing more than that, other than if other people come into our council or our, uh, outreach meetings and sit down and say they have an issue, then we can immediately direct towards that. But that hasn't been the case, very few people come in, well, maybe three in the last five years have ever come in and sat in through a meeting with us, um, to say there was an issue, and then we got to address it, which was kind of interesting.
Great, thank you, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I do not.
Okay, great, so you know the deal, since you're reapplying. Okay, well, thank you so much for taking the time to come in.
Yes.
Right. Okay, we're gonna move on to applicants applying for Committee for Community Engagement. And our first interview applicant is Eva Conway McGuire. Nope, not here yet. Are we a little ahead of time?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, can I, can I skip if the other person's here? Okay, so is Angel Faulkner here? Hi, Ms. Faulkner, so thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each Board or Commission is advisory to the city council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in the public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions. And we're gonna start with Councilor Guffterson.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming. Why do you want to serve on a Board or Commission?
Uh, I've always served in some capacity in the community that I've lived in, and I've just moved to Forest Grove two years ago, so I'm relatively new to the community, um, but I love the work and, um, I get a lot out of it. I find it's a really great way to connect with your neighbors, collaborate on problems, um, ideas, and, um, what better way to do that, community engagement? So, um, I think, um, you know, I can bring a lot of my past experience as a volunteer and as a formerly elected official in, in your seat. Um, I just, you know, serve where I can and where I, I think I could be helpful.
Wonderful, thank you.
So, um, Ms. Faulkner, um, how are you vested in Forest Grove? Could you tell us that?
Yeah, so we just moved two years ago here, um, but we've actually been a part of the community since 2010. My husband works at the, at Pacific University, and he's been there, um, since he helped to restart the football program. So we've been, um, here lots and lots for, for many years, um, but just recently, you know, made the move. Uh, our kiddo is, um, you know, goes to the middle school here, and we're involved in the, in the swim club and, and lots of activities. Another way to, to try to engage more and, and meet more people.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, uh, my question for you is, please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group.
Um, I think, you know, listening, um, and really trying to understand is probably the most important thing in collaboration, because I think when you get a group of people together, um, you know, when someone else spoke, there's sort of big voices in a room. Um, and people come with their passions, they come with their big ideas, um, you know, and they come with their perspective, and I think it's important to try to understand where people are coming from, um, and how, you know, how we all can probably work toward common goals, even if sometimes we disagree on some of the particulars. So I think listening and understanding.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, what are some ideas to increase engagement in underserved communities?
Um, I would, um, this is gonna sound, I, I will, I will say this, I had a hard time navigating the website. I, 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 I want, you know, I'm just trying to learn as much as I possibly could in preparing for this, and even applying, you know, when I first was, when I saw the invitation to apply. Um, I think making sure that your, that your communication out into the community is, um, is reaching a wide audience, and I think that's one tool. Um, you know, other tools, I think, um, are, um, you know, I see, community events around town, um, making sure that you've got a presence there. So I'm not sure if you've got a booth at the, at the farmer's market, but that might be a really great way to engage in people who might not necessarily, you know, know that there's a meeting here tonight and that, that there are opportunities, you know, to engage with the city, Big C City, um, because they're engaging in their communities already. Um, and so going out into the community and meeting people where they are, I think is probably one of the, one of the things that I found most helpful when I was serving on a city council, is, you know, making sure that, you know, I'm building relationships, you know, that you're building relationships with the school district and the parent affinity groups there, and, you know, some of the other affinity groups that might be in town. Um, you know, I know that, the, you know, the connections with the college, you know, could, could definitely, could be a place where, you know, that could be strengthened. Um, I'd say, look around at the resources, you know, the, the communities that are already sort of doing a lot of work. I know that there's, um, a strong Rotary Group, there's, um, there's the Forest Grove Foundation, you know, there, there's lots of people sort of doing their good work in their spheres, and so looking for those opportunities to sort of like cross the line and make, you know, really make that Venn diagram as messy as possible.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I do, uh, I, you know, I guess maybe my question would be, you know, if, if, you know, the process that you've sort of established here for filling, you know, the, you know, the seats that are available, I was browsing, you know, some of the other boards and commissions, and I kind of checked off a few that I might be interested in and where I have some experience serving before. Um, and so if, you know, as you're filling these spots and you hear from people who might have interest in maybe more than one Board or Commission, you know, what, I guess maybe what, what's that process look like?
Yeah, so let me explain a little bit about what happened right now in the spring, early summer recruitment, is typically we recruit in the fall. So October, like September will go out, you know, we'll put out the promotions, like, and we'll do one big application process. Um, we had a few boards and commission, like HLB, I think, has four members, right? So we had some that were really low, so we made a decision to try to do a, I mean, for lack of better phrasing, like a spontaneous recruitment to fill those spots. So in the past, what we've done is, when people are interested in multiple, we'll see, you know, their priority, we'll see if we can fit them. Uh, we have a few members of the community that are on multiple ones, if it worked out that way. Uh, if we have enough, we definitely wanna have as many people engaged and involved as possible. So we'll usually do a first choice, a second choice. Um, so with that being said, if there was something that you saw on the website, you could definitely apply for that in the fall, right? If that was like a more of a fit for you, or which one was it that you were thinking?
Oh, I, I had also checked off, um, the Planning Commission.
Is that something you are interested in? Is the Planning Commission? Cuz it's not listed on here.
Okay.
Oh, it is, sorry, I'm like, I, it's really hard, I just ordered readers, like literally a month ago, and I don't know exactly when to put them on or not.
I was just sitting there regretting not bringing my readers, so I feel you.
I can't see if they're on too much, and then when I need them, I'm like, oh my goodness, at some point, I'll get better with the readers.
But no, I think I understand, so if.
So what is your first choice?
Uh.
Is CCE your first choice?
Yeah, I think community, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay, cool. Uh, so do you know the process, like we'll deliberate, and then CSE staff will call you and let you know? Okay, cool, it was so nice meeting you.
All of you, oh, and I should, I, I didn't wanna interrupt the process, but my husband would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't. The name is Faulkner, not Faulkner.
Oh, Faulkner.
No, 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 please don't apologize.
No, it's okay, and I was like saying that Faulkner, okay, got it.
Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, sorry about that. It's nice meeting you as well. Um, so is Eva Conway still no-go? So we're gonna keep going down the list. Zach Franson? Oh, cool, let's see if I, did I say your name correctly? Oh, some time. So first choice is Planning Commission. Okay, hi. Thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each Board or Commission is advisory to the city council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions. And we're gonna start with Councilor Guffterson.
Hi, Mr. Franson, um, why do you want to serve on a Board or Commission?
Uh, so this is, uh, the first time ever for, you know, applying or getting involved, but I feel as a, a member of the community that it's important to, if you wanna help out in your community to start with this and see where it goes.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
Yeah, don't, try not to be nervous, that's, I mean, you see.
Sitting at the dining room table, just.
And I make a lot of mistakes, and I'll just keep trying to do that to help you, just be like, it's.
Thank you.
So how are you, how are you vested in Forest Grove?
Uh, so we, me and my wife moved out here, uh, four years ago, and, uh, we, now, we have two daughters, and the oldest daughter, we started into kindergarten. And my oldest daughter, we started into kindergarten this coming fall. And so she's a stay-at-home mother, works part-time, you know, at the house. And then I work construction over in Hillsborough at Intel.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My question for you is, please, please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group?
Oh, so I think bouncing ideas off of one another and, you know, finding the best way to get to a solution and, you know, moving forward and taking everybody's ideas into consideration and trying to apply them how we can.
Thank you.
All right. What is your vision about Forest Grove's future development and redevelopment?
So I think, I feel that with all of the, it seems like there's more and more home building going on around here, which is great, you know, I kind of feel like more infrastructure is needed surrounding that. Maybe another grocery store, things like that, you know, gas stations, you know. I don't know exactly how many there is, but it seems like there's few and far between. But a lot of houses being built out here, which again is great. Accommodating the city and, you know, handle that influx and be.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, no.
Okay, and I have a question for you. So one of, I don't know if you heard me mention this, but one of our commissions is short on numbers. It's our Historic Landmarks Board.
Yeah.
And they work with our, we have five historic neighborhoods in Forest Grove. And so they set like the regulations, the policy, do education outreach. So I'm wondering if you aren't accepted for the Planning or CCE, if you would be interested in serving on that Board and Commission?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, cool. Great. And that's a quarterly meeting, so they meet four times a year.
Okay.
On Thursday at 6:30.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for applying. Okay, and then is Mr. Richards on, no, on Zoom? Are we early? We're a little early for him. We have like, we'll just check.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Valenzuela.
Yes, I would like to know who is the person that withdrew their application today?
Oh, number seven on the list, Vanessa Savage.
Okay, okay.
She was applied for EDC and Planning Commission.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I don't know. Well, his time is 6:05. So it's 6:04 for the guy that, so I'd rather wait until 6:07. I mean, I think when Ms. Holden, I think she just walked in, so we'll give her. Yeah, hello. No, no, we're going to, sorry, we have an appointment at 6:05 on Zoom. So we're just trying to figure out when is the sweet spot to move on or not move on. Thank you though. Yes, okay, please skip. Okay, we're going to move on. And if Brad comes in the Zoom waiting room, we'll circle back to him. But if I could have Ms. Gwen Holden come up, there's a seats right in front of the microphone up here. That'd be great. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Oops, wrong screen. Like where's that guy now? Okay, so thank you for applying to serve on the Forest Grove Board, on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each board or commission is advisory to the City Council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in the public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions. And we're going to start with Counselor Gufferson on that end and kind of move this way on Zoom and then over.
Hi, Ms. Holden. Why do you want to serve on a Board or Commission?
You know, I grew up in Forest Grove, but I've spent my entire career in downtown Portland until about two years ago. And as I, this is exciting to be able to do more work in my community. It's always, you know, I haven't been as connected to Forest Grove as much as I've wanted to in the past. Now all of a sudden I'm surrounded by names and familiar places and it's pretty exciting, but we love it here. My kids are in college now, I've got time. And we're excited. My husband and I aren't ready for retirement, but this is definitely where we want to be and I want to maybe help model some of that forward.
Great, thank you.
I love it here, so.
How are you vested in Forest Grove? And you've already told us some, if there's anything you can expand on.
Oh, gosh, well, I mean, it goes back, I'm fourth generation. Great grandparents and everything moved out here, so I'm pretty invested. I mean, I really care about what's going on with some of the trail cleaning up out by Salmon Berry. And so everything around here is, I think, important. I want to see it grow and thrive. I'd love to, you know, see, you know, another grocery store like everybody else, but it'd be nice to see Forest Grove continue growing and growing the right way. Thank you.
Good evening. My question to you is, please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group?
I, I work both on my own in my, my role at the bank, but also as a group. So sometimes there's a lot of work being done for the greater good, if that makes sense. Especially over the last few years since 2008 onward. The banks have been working hard to take care of our clients, but also mitigate risk for the bank. So there's a lot of collaboration that goes on and when doing that to try to take care of your clients, but take care of your employer also. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And I have a last one for you. From an economic development rather than a business operations perspective, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing Forest Grove? And what do you see as the city's role in addressing that issue?
As for economic development?
Yep.
Well, we're, we're seeing a lot of people move out here, you know, by the Forest Grove High School and such. I suppose being able to provide even more employment to keep those people from having to get onto Highway 26. And so I suppose job, jobs, I would imagine.
Right, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
You know, I don't, I've, I've had a chance to attend some of the EDC luncheons. So I'm learning quite, I'm learning more than I ever thought I would. And so I feel like I'm surrounded by a lot of good people there and, yeah, I'm just excited. It's such a beautiful town, so.
Oh, thank you. I think so too. Thank you so much. And I'm glad to hear that you've been going to, and I noticed Miles, our EDC coordinator, when you brought up the grocery store, it's like, is he choking back there? It's like he felt the pressure from the back of the room. Yeah, he's right back there.
Sure is. Sorry, Miles.
No, I thought it was so funny. I was like, oh, what's going on back there? He's a little uncomfortable.
It'll be curious. So what does a grocery store look like to me versus somebody else? What does that mean? You know, it'd be really interesting. I'd love to hear more about what the community wants.
Great, thank you. So we will deliberate after all of our interviews finish and then Joyce will be contacting you shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in. And I do not see any Zoom attendees, so I don't think that Brad is still here. So then, is there a Marcus Pettaway? Pettway?
He was also supposed to be on Zoom.
On Zoom. I could read that next to, thank you.
They take a little getting used to.
I don't like, I don't even have any experience. Okay, so let, I guess that's 23. Is it, Jesse, can I ask a question? Can I ask a follow-up question of someone that already interviewed? Okay, Ms. Faulkner. Faulkner, would you be willing to serve on Planning as a first choice? Okay, I'm just, I was just curious. We're going to deliberate in a little bit, but.
Coming up to the microphone to make sure, yes.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you. Faulkner. Ms. Faulkner. All right. Thank you. But the best was he pulled it out of the monitor, like.
You got upset with me for bringing cookies one night.
Love it. Can we skip an interview Claudia now? Claudia, are you good with that? So you can go home? Okay, come on up, Claudia. Good idea. I was like, wait, I feel like we could be doing something. Claudia's like looking at me like, I want to go eat dinner too. Like, let me get out of here. It took me a little bit. It's the last week of school. I'm just, you know, I'm kind of in the midst of chaos. All right, so thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each board or commission is advisory to the City Council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is about six minutes and will include three to four minutes. And we're going to start with Counselor Gufferson.
Hi, Ms. Jacobs. I'm sure you can recite the script that the mayor has been reading. All right, why do you want to serve on a Board or Commission?
I think for me, this opportunity, I see it as a collective. So as the Chamber Director, I see it as an opportunity for me to hold the voice of close to 300 businesses. So for me, it's really important to advocate for the businesses. And I think, you know, we are here to help support our economic development, you know, so that our businesses have an opportunity to find ways to be creative, especially in, you know, hard times, but at the same time to build collaboration with the city and partners, large employers, you know, to make sure that, you know, we're headed in the right direction. So it's a lot of collaboration, partnership and networking.
Great, thank you.
So the next question seems a little silly because we know quite a bit about you, but for the record, would you tell us how you are vested in Forest Grove?
So, you know, as many of you know, I have four children. I, my husband and I are empty nesters now and we raised our kids here in Forest Grove. They've gone through the school system. I have a business that I've had out here for over 24 years. And I'm a long 20-year-plus Rotarian. So for me, the service above self and doing things in this community is very, very important. So definitely vested in making sure that we can make it the best place that, that we can for our residents and our community members and find ways to engage and motivate people to stay and make it less of a bedroom community.
Thank you.
Hello, Claudia. Good to see you. Please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group?
I think one of the things that's very important for consensus building is to be patient and respectful. And again, coming to this particular Board and Commission, it is once again looking at the collective voice of what makes sense for the outcome. And it's looking at the big picture more so than maybe personal views. It's really about looking to see what is going to be the best outcome for whatever it is that we're trying to make a decision, whether it means that, you know, the side that I'm leaning towards, you know, has the outcome or whether it is that we're doing exactly what's best for the future of the decision that we're going to make. So it's really just not being reactive, but really trying to step back and look at the big, big picture and really not look at necessarily the words in heated conversations, but to actually try to understand what it is that they're trying to say despite of maybe the tonality of what's coming through.
All right. Thank you very much.
From an economic development rather than a business operations perspective, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing Forest Grove? And what do you see as the city's role in addressing the issue?
I guess part of the good thing about going last is I heard this question and it really got me thinking about this. And I did write a couple of notes on this. For me, I think some of the pressing issues are definitely the need for sustainable growth that really balances the economic opportunities for the quality of life. So by that I mean things like infrastructure development, the housing affordability, the workforce development. I think that the city's role is going to be super pivotal and being strategic. And I think we're at a great place with the visioning that's going to be happening. So it's really exciting. It's an exciting time, you know, that we get to look into the future and start mapping out what those next years for us are going to be. But I think for me, those are. But I think for me, those are really those three, the infrastructure development, the housing affordability, and the workforce development is huge.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I think I just would like to say part of the thing that I feel is going great at this moment is just, you know, from a city standpoint, what I see is a lot of collaboration, a lot of working with the larger partners. I liked seeing that the school district had Pacific University and the city of Cornelius and all the big players, you know, really communicating. I think that's very, very important. And I feel like it's what's gonna allow, you know, the city, the boards and commissions to really move in a very positive, forward-friendly, you know, way. And also, I think for the community, it's showing that a lot of the communication is coming out. And I like that. So I agree with somebody that mentioned the website. I think, you know, just making sure that we have the in-language and all of that information, I think is just moving in the right direction. So not a question, just a comment.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so Joyce will be getting ahold of you soon. Eva? Come on up. Oh, it's okay. Things happen. It's fine. Hi. So, "Thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each board or commission is advisory to the City Council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in the public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions." And just for my colleagues, Eva's applying for the CCE, Community for Community Engagement. Okay, so we're gonna start with questions from Counsel Guffston, Counsel Martinez, Counsel Valenzuela, and then Counsel Marshall. Okay, so go ahead, like, and this is really informal, so it's, yeah.
Why did you want to serve on a board or commission?
Well, I've lived in the community now off and on for 11 years. It was community school. And I've really, I've really grown to love Forest Grove. And it was brought to my attention by a friend, Marnie, and that Forest Grove needed people to offer to serve on these different committees. So I looked at the committees and the Community Engagement Committee and it piqued my interest a little bit. I have a lot of experience with volunteering, but I'm not in this community so much. I volunteered with the lunch program and I went to the school. But, you know, I just, I thought that it might be really nice to connect with some local people and that I might maybe be able to help out the community a little bit.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Valenzuela, we're gonna go to you next.
Okay. Good evening. Please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group.
Well, I think the main setting that I've done this in is school. And to be honest, it hasn't been easy when we've done it at school, right? It takes a lot of discussion of the different pros and cons of whatever the topic is that you're discussing. And, you know, eventually, it comes, it seems that it comes down to, you know, looking at what it is you're trying to achieve and looking, looking at what solutions might achieve the outcomes that you hope for and being willing to compromise a little bit and keeping an open mind so that you don't, you don't get stuck in, in, kind of what you came to the table thinking was the answer, the solution to whatever it was you were trying to achieve consensus on. So being willing, able to compromise a little bit, listen to other people, explain, you know, why you think that maybe your views are important.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
What are some ideas to increase engagement in underserved communities?
I've been thinking about this a lot over the past, especially. Well, you know, one I think is definitely volunteerism. Getting people, and getting people to realize that, you know, that, that the people who are doing the volunteering aren't necessarily people who, what did I say, who also don't have needs. I think that, I've worked in some communities, I worked in Hunters Point in San Francisco, and one of the, one of the big things was that that community often felt like they were viewed as in need, right? That there were these other people from the outside coming in to help. So helping every, and it really helped those people to see that they have something to give too. So helping everybody see that they have something to give, I think, is, is one way. Sorry, can you tell me a question again?
What are some of the ideas to increase engagement in underserved communities?
Okay, so I think about volunteering, right? Maybe having some kind of opportunity for people to learn about volunteer opportunities in the community and like be at volunteer fair or something like that. I also, one of the things that I really like about Forest Grove are, is a farmer's market. And it's so fun on that night because everybody's out walking around. I feel like, and we did the garden tour on Sunday, which was really fun. Feel like more opportunities to get people out and kind of moving about the community and interacting with each other would be really good ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
I'm like, you can ask us anything.
I mean, I know I do, but. So how, how large are these committees?
And so typical, most committees have nine members. And then a student rep can be on there as well. And then we also just are building out our MIAC, which can have a large, Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, which will have a larger group. But nine is on CCI.
Okay. And what, what do you guys view as the desired outcome for the committee?
For CCE, I should, I think you said CCI, but we literally just changed it. So for Community for Community Involvement or Engagement, I think the desired goal is just really like we did at Communication Master Plan. So in the last few years, we've increased the literature going out to people. We revamped the website. I just like, came out recently, we're having more events. So it's just really like trying to continue our community engagement, right? And our values and like making sure there's lots of different types of opportunities. You know, like I go to the farmer's market once a month and have a booth so people can have informal conversations. I went to the barbecue at the police department. So it's like trying to make sure that we're supporting events or CCEs, supporting the events, supporting the council goals and values, and that we're really just increasing communication.
Okay. And do you, are you trying to increase attendance at already existing events? Do you, would you like the committee to come up with a certain number of new events?
Well, this, so, and we're gonna have to like wrap up pretty quickly. So the committee, I was on, I was the liaison for that committee a few years ago, and they did quarterly town hall meetings. And what they found, so that was like their work plan that year or their goal for that year. But what they found is people were not attending. Like, so having more events to try to create community engagement wasn't hitting the mark. And so right now, they're doing like a buddy system where they're going to other boards and commissions, trying to see what they're doing and just like really seeing how they can, I would say the word that I would use would be like, enrich those activities and the involvement and the engagement is their, their goals right now. It's like what, where, and they're trying to figure out where do they fit into, you know, that sharing of knowledge and information.
Okay, so trying to get them to communicate with the other committees.
Yeah, that's what they're doing right now.
Okay.
And they also do the AT, they're the group that plans the annual town meeting, which will be in September this year. Okay, cool. Well, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. I hope I didn't make anybody wait around.
It's fine. We just kept rolling and then you came in and that's, we're just flexible. We're all doing the best we can. So thank you for coming in and thank you for applying. Mr., is, so we have what, Brad Richards on Zoom? I don't know who RSC is.
I think that might be Brad, so I'm gonna promote.
Okay, let's see.
Hello there. This is Brad. I apologize, the RSC is my corporation name. But yes, Bradley Richards, present and happy to be here.
Hello, let me read you my script since it's public record and then we'll get started, Brad. Okay, so "Thank you for applying to serve on a Forest Grove Board or Commission. As you may know, each board or commission is advisory to the City Council and plays an important role in assuring public involvement in the public policy process. Today's interview is to meet with you and help us learn more about how and why you would like to serve. Each interview is six minutes and will include three to four questions." Okay, so we're gonna start with Counsel Guffston.
Hi there. Why do you want to serve on a board or commission?
You know, primarily, I am able to now with my work schedule. And I've served on a tinnitus board. It's a committee for my profession as a, it's a board certified hearing aid specialist. And I've done a lot of work in California as an expert witness. And I wasn't on the board in California, but I worked with the board and some of the education committees and really enjoyed it, ma'am. And that's really where that's at. Forest Grove is a newer home to me. I've lived in Oregon and Forest Grove since 2017, but love the community, am planting roots. It's my forever home. I have a beautiful duplex there. So those combinations of being able to now via Zoom and my work schedule and part of Forest Grove and really enjoying and wanting to know more about it in any capacity are the reasons.
Are there any other, any other ways that you can tell us about how you're vested in Forest Grove?
Well, my daughter went to Pacific. She then could have come to, back to California where I raised her in the Bay Area and decided to stay, went to Lewis and Clark. And she's in Lake Oswego, and so her and my son are there and love it. And I want to be where they're at, period. But also, because of them, I've put down roots and bought a property that I'm in love with and, and will be there. And it's so a chance to really be my forever place and involved in a community that reminds me a lot of where I grew up, in a town called Morgan Hill, California, where I was raised by my family. And I see a lot of similarities and that's where I want to be. And I really want to be involved in it. And this is almost a fresh start coming in to, to get a chance to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening. And please describe how you work to achieve consensus within a group.
Respectful of everyone's opinion. You know, I've come and in some of the other committees I've served on, for lack of a better term, that there were groups. I was a subject matter expert and an expert examiner for the state of California Hearing Aid Board. So I would work with seven other audiologists. I am not an audiologist, but these were people where I had to form some strong opinions at times with things that I were, you know, wholeheartedly agreed in and wanted to, you know, interject my professionalism and, you know, what I feel are good points into the conversation, but also really respecting, doing a lot of listening and being open to diverge from any one way if it meets the end goal of, of the particular function.
Thank you.
Yes.
What is your vision about Forest Grove's future development and redevelopment?
Well, I'll be honest, council member or councilman, I want to learn more to find out exactly what, you know, I guess the strategic thinking of Forest Grove is. And I would assume for it to still uphold those values, the community that it is right now. But I know there's a ton of new growth. I've been following that. But I'll be honest with you, I would love to know. And it's why I chose the Planning Commission. But I would assume growth that's needed and inevitable, but controlled, measured, fair, and ultimately allows Forest Grove to prosper.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is Mayor Wenzel. I have a couple, I have a comment and then a question. So we are actually just undertaking, listening to some of your answers. I just want to let you know that we are currently looking at a 2040 visioning plan. And if that's something you're interested in, there's gonna be community engagement and a task force with that as well. I just want to give you a heads up with that. You can go on our website to get communication on that. And then my question to you is, separate from planning, but also has a little bit of some planning implications, is our Historic Landmarks Board? And I was wondering, would you be interested or willing to serve on that board or commission?
You know, I would be open to that, Mayor, in the, in the capacity of, if it fulfills where I see growth and, you know, for me. But that sounds very interesting, so I would certainly be open to hearing about that.
Okay, cool. And then Ms. Richards, do you have any questions for us?
No, I will do my due diligence in, in like the 2040 plan, where I'm sure I'll have some. But this was great that it came up to be able to have an option here to chat with you and look at some of these boards coming up. I humbled for it and am serious about it, want to learn more. And so I'll do my, you know, research on my end, so to speak. But no questions at this time, ma'am.
It looks like Counsel Valenzuela has a question.
Yes, I have one more question. Would you be interested in serving in another board or commission such as the Economic Development Commission?
Yes, Councilwoman, I would. I would. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so Mr. Richards, what's gonna happen is we're gonna deliberate following this meeting. You can stay online and listen if you would like. Then we will come to consensus and give staff some direction. And then staff will reach out to you and follow up with what we decided.
Thank you so much for the time and your professionalism. I look forward to hearing from you all. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thanks. It was a pleasure meeting you.
Likewise.
Okay, thank you. We're, according to my records, we've interviewed everybody, like not Marcus Pettaway. Is Marcus Pettaway never, that's a no-show. That was EDC. Do we know on the EDC, before we get started, Jesse, do we know on the EDC spots what roles the vacancies are in? You know how there's like small business, downtown business?
Oh, great question. So of the two applicants that were interviewed for EDC, Gwen Hilden and Claudia Yakos, one is specific for the Chamber Director.
Okay, so that's a check.
Claudia, or specific for the Chamber of Commerce, excuse me. And the other one is for a finance rep. And as a commercial banking rep, it fulfills that role.
Okay. Is there consensus from the council to appoint Ms. Gwen Hilden and Ms. Claudia Yakos to the EDC? Can I get a thumbs up for it, Henrys? Okay, so those two. And then Ms. Araha, wait. Aricata? Aricawa? Okay, she, she's highlighted. Is she out of Forest Grove School District?
Out of Forest Grove in the school district.
Okay, so.
No, she's within the school district, right?
Right, so, so she's then fine. Okay. Because remember, like, are we, they switched, we switched the rules, right? So that gets confusing. I think as long as they're in the school district, they're compliant. So we don't really need to have that highlighted, I don't think. Because it fits within our criteria. For me, that would just make it easier. Okay, so I thought both of the forestry commission people were, I mean, one's a reappointee. It looked like in the packet that he tried to reapply and just missed the deadline. And so anyways, are we, does there consensus for the forestry?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I want to, we have planning and CCE left. So I want to throw a curveball, not really a curveball, but I want to throw my opinion out first. I would like to. Uh, I would like to see Ms. Falconer go on planning. And Eva and Zach go on CCE. And then Brad Richards go on HLB. And my reasoning for that is based on our interview and reading the packet and looking at experience, planning, uh, just, per, just the experience that Ms. Falconer has, um, in previous roles. Planning is like, there's, I mean, there's so much to learn about land use and our code and there, the skill set to be able to jump into that. Uh, it, I, I really am excited to see new people come to town and want to participate. But it is, it's a heavy lift if you haven't done it before. And in the last few years, we've had a, a, some turnover in that department or in that commission. So anyways, that would be my, and I think, um, that would be my recommendation would be to put Eva on CCE, Zach on CCE, Angel on Planning Commission, and then Brad Richards on HLB. So any discussion on that?
My only concern would be is that was your third choice?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know. But I did call her back up and ask her, and she said yes.
Yep.
I mean, is it okay with you or would you rather have CCE?
Okay.
It's okay with the applicant.
Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry, where did you say Zach?
Uh, I would put his second choice as CCE.
Oh, CCE.
And that's like, uh, yeah.
Okay.
So Eva's first choice was CCE and then Zach had, Zach's first choice was Planning Commission and then second was CCE.
Okay.
And then Brad said he would be, I just don't think, I heard, um, Councilor Valenzuela ask about EDC, but I don't know what he would fit into. So EDC's has pretty, is there a place for Brad to fit into EDC, Jesse? Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was pressing the button. As an education manager, um, no, there's not. So there's not a spot that's, that's dedicated on the board for that type of position.
Correct. So I think HLB and then if he wants to go on the task force for 2040.
Okay.
There's an option for that too.
Sounds good.
Is there consensus for what I propose? And then, but I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Falconer, but be real honest. Like, are you happy to be on planning or would you rather be on CCE? Okay, great. I really appreciate it. Okay, cool. So consensus, Councilor Valenzuela, thumbs up. Okay, so staff, do you need anything more from us?
Uh, just to make sure, I just want to confirm what the consensus appointments are. So, um,
Oh, my readers.
Sashia Arakawa, CFC, Michael Howell, CFC, Eva Conway McGuire, CCE, Angel Falconer, Planning Commission, Zach Franzen, CCE, Brad Richards, HLB, Gwen Hilden, EDC, Claudia Jacobs, EDC. Is that correct?
That's what I, that's why I have to. Okay, with that, this work session is adjourned.